Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley. Today, we are joined by founder of Get Oiling, Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hey, everybody.
And we have Colin and Julie from our team joining us today as well. Hey, guys.
How's it going everyone?
And where are you guys in the world? Let us know that you're here and what you're excited to learn about today. If you are someone who is looking for help, you're in the right place. This is a live work session where we can be working with you through any questions that you have. And if you want to see things in person, if you're more of a visual learner and you need some hands-on help, this is going to be a great opportunity for you. This is your first time here. Welcome. We do this call every single week at noon Eastern Time, US Eastern Time, and it's available to anybody in Team YL. We are Get Oiling. We are a platform that is designed to help young living brand partners manage and grow and scale what you offer and even support your adjacent offerings alongside your brand partner business. So if you want to sell courses, if you're an AFT practitioner, if you're a yoga teacher and you want to take your studio online, you can do all that and oil all that right here, all under one roof with all the tools you need to manage and grow or everything but the VO. So we're here today to help you this week, learn how to partner with local professionals, right? So we're going to be working very specifically talking about how to work with Realtors today with it, with an example as well as resources that are done for you that you can start using right away. And we'll talk a little bit about how this can translate into working with other professionals in your area as well. So let's go see where everybody's coming in from. We've got Arizona. Arizona, Sherry would like to learn how to work with her chiropractor. That's fantastic. Chiropractors open to you teaching classes. That is a fantastic way to work with others. But this is going to be a way that might be an even more direct lead into new, new customers. We've got DC, Wisconsin, Arkansas, Missouri, Connecticut, and of course, here on the call, BC, Florida, New York, and Greg is in Fargo. We are so excited to have you here. So what we're going to do right now is go ahead and get into, I want to go, actually, we've got a lot more chat happening here. Let's not, let's not lose this. Get more from Minneapolis, Kansas City, Eagan, Minnesota. Also have someone who works part-time for a naturopath that'd like to learn how to do things with them. Hello Vermont. Nice to see you, Camelia. Alright, so we're going to get into slides. I don't want to, I don't want us to take up too, too much of the time in the slides and training. I want to be able to actually show you guys how to plug in and use this thing because we did create a totally free resource bundle that you can plug and play directly into your Get Oiling account. So if that's something that you would love to have for your business, stay tuned. Alright, so we're going to go ahead and turn off video and get into our slides for today. And we'll come back and join you just as soon as these are done. Alright, there we go. So today, we're going to learn how to work with local professionals in your area to grow your young living brand partner business. So what's happening today is first, we're going to be talking about how we can partner with local professionals. And I'd love to continue this conversation after we're done with the education piece today to really kind of explore different ways that we can apply this strategy that I'm going to teach you to how you can work with more than just the Realtors that I'm mentioning here. We're also going to be sharing with you the resources we've created to help you work, in this case with Realtors specifically. But do keep an open mind as you're watching this, the structure and the approach here is something that's going to apply to many different types of practitioners and businesses that are local to you or that you may have relationships with. And we'll talk about those additional ideas to use the strategy in your local area with those other professionals. And then we'll get into some live help and Q and A. Because if you came here looking for questions today, we want to serve you. If you want to get those questions answered, we can work with you. So make sure you head over to the Q and A section, if you're live on the Zoom call here, to leave those questions because our chat can get a little busy, super friendly, fun place to connect with other brand partners and like-minded folks from around the world. But we can miss your questions when things get a little active there. So please do go ahead and add those to the Q and A so we don't miss them. And if you are watching this in the future on the YouTube channel and you want to join one of these live calls, we're live at noon every Thursday. That's getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. And if you would like to work together on a call like this one, where you can get hands-on help, we can look at the things that you're doing together, explore strategies and implementation and things like this. You can go to getoiling.com/webstatereview and we can work together on anything, whether you're just getting started and trying to make sure you're working in the right place or you are working on more advanced strategies and want some eyes on what you're doing. Alright, so let's talk. Let me know in the chat. We want more customers, right? This is like an eye roll, obvious, right? Everybody here would like to have more customers, right? More people who are purchasing Young Living products month to month, right? So we all do. That's established. But what if we could work with other businesses in our own local communities who also want more customers, right? So that we can help each other out, help each other to get and keep new customers. It takes a village, right? We say that about raising kids. But isn't it also true about raising businesses, growing businesses, sustaining an economic hub? We have to be cooperative in one or maybe multiple ways. And it's very easy as a brand partner, where you could work from anywhere, from home, where you don't necessarily see yourself as being part of the fabric of your local business community. The fact is, is that you are, if you choose to be. And if you choose to be, then this unlocks an entire world right outside your front door where you can be collaborating with other business owners to support each other. And that means good thing for your business. It means good things for businesses in your community. And of course, a rising tide raises all ships, right? So, did you know that you, right now, right here, right now, you have something that can help local professionals in your area to increase their customer retention and satisfaction? Did you know that? Right now, even if you just said yes to being a brand partner today, if you don't have a single customer yet, if you, you don't even know a third of what Young Living offers, you just know that there's some oils. Even if you just said yes to being a brand partner today, you have something right now that can help professionals in your area to have happier clients. Anybody know what it is? Do you have a guess? Anybody want to guess like what you have access to that could improve the business cycle of professionals in your area that could improve their retention and their customer satisfaction? Any guesses? I put it in the chat if you've got one. Curious to know. I haven't really leaked anything here. So I don't know if you guys are going to guess. Okay, diffuse uplifting oils, mailing list, great product. Ding 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 ding. Elizabeth, great product. Yes, great product. Mariness, you're also correct. I mean, your network is going to be valuable to others. And that is definitely a, that's a shared thing, your, your network, maybe your Realtors network. These are both things that can be mutually mined for the success of, of the respective other business, right? But no, what we've got here, what we have access to right now that can help people in your local area improve their customer satisfaction and retention are our products, right? Sampleable products, specifically, I see Sarah following up here. Hey there. So yes, sampleable products, products that you can share. Okay, so let's talk about how we can do this. How can we partner with professionals and open the door up to more people being exposed to Young Living products, making this easy and simple for you and really easy, importantly, easy and simple for the professionals who can be putting your sampleable products in the hands of their clients, alright? So let's talk about this first. If we want to partner with professionals in our area, whether they be chiropractors, naturopaths, Realtors, doulas, midwives, massage therapists, therapists, generally speaking, whoever your sort of ideal person that you might want to, and there should be many, partner with in your local business network. Let's talk about how we connect with them. First, we need to seek to understand their unique needs. In order for people to be open to helping us, we need to show up helping them first, right? Can we, do we agree with that? If we raise our hand real quick, like, does, does that make sense? We want everyone in our community to be able to say, hey, this, this person's got these products. You've got to, you've got to get these in the hands of, of your people, right? We want them to be excited to help you. But in order for that to happen, we have to create an opportunity for that to be a reciprocation, right? We show up first in service and we trust that the goodwill follows, right? We help others first and we understand that by helping others get what they want, we will find the thing that we, that we came here for, right? So first, we need to understand what their needs are. So, do we know, for instance, if your goal is to work with a chiropractor? Have you sat down with that chiropractor to find out what their goals are, right? Are they, are they at a place, because a chiropractic practice can be at a number of different places. They could have enough, enough of customers, right? Maybe their advertising campaign's working perfectly. There's a lot of people coming in the door, but they don't have people who are sticking around past their initial, you know, sequence of adjustments. And we want those people to be retained further, you know, to, to buy into care plans, right? You're not going to know unless you ask, unless you have these conversations. So I want you to consider visiting local networking groups and learning more about the people who are there and what the needs are that they have for their businesses. Please do go to our YouTube channel, our Get Oiling YouTube, YouTube channel and look up the keyword networking. Search that, because we actually had a community member and this was going on a couple of years ago now, but this is training that will work forever and always because networking is the original way of growing a young living business, right? Is, is networking. We are network marketing, right? So, visit your local networking groups so that you can learn more about the people in your community that are trying to grow their businesses and what they're looking for right now. Make appointments with the people who have businesses in your area and learn about them, right? Make these your friends, your contacts, your connects. Make a commitment to mutually support each other, right? And you, you ask how, how can I help you first, right? Because the answer that we're going to provide to them for how they can help you, we're going to make this really easy for them. You'll see that in just a second. And really importantly, guys, listen closely because there's literally opportunity everywhere. And like, education is a traditional way that we might go about providing some kind of a value add and that is always a good option. But make sure you don't get stuck in the education trap, right? Because education does not always convert to qualified leads, right? It can have those things, but have other things too. We need more product experiences, right? Alright, so anyway, let's listen closely to the people that we're connecting with because there's opportunity all over the place. And then commit to being connected to your local business community. Join your local Chamber of Commerce. Go to BNI and similar types of meetings. Make friends. Meetup, exactly. Yes. Meetup.com is a great way to find all kinds of interesting groups around you and you will typically find businesses that are looking for new clients and customers hosting those groups on Meetup. So go to those, get to know those people and ask them what they're doing for their retention. What are you doing after you get a new client started? What are you doing for client success so that people stick around, right? Okay, so look, it's not always, this is important to remember, like I just mentioned, it's not always about getting new clients. Retention and satisfaction matters for these businesses so that they can get easy referrals in the future. So think about Realtors, for instance, right? Think about Realtors, they are out there putting themselves out there 24/7/365 because, you know, they're not selling a house every single day. It takes a lot of time, takes a lot of effort, but what they want to make sure that they do is stay top of mind and tightly connected to the people that they have served so that those are surely going to be people who send them new business in the future, right? There are a lot of businesses that work this way. So just be paying attention here because education, like if we're going out and we're teaching classes and we're educating a chiropractor's patients, that's good for us, right? Is it good for them? How is it good for them? Can we connect how we deliver that education to something that can grow the chiropractor's office or help the chiropractor meet their goals? This is where we need to be thinking about how what we can do can be a reciprocal benefit, right? So anyway, we want to make this about them, make it about their business. It's not necessarily always about getting new clients. It often is, but keeping clients and strengthening your, your connection with clients so that you are more likely to get referrals, as is the case with Realtors. Just keep that mind open there. Your primary benefit, and this is really important for you to remember with the strategy that we're going to talk about here today, your primary benefit is list building, meaning growing a list of people who could become your customers. At which point, once they're your leads, education is so in your court and that is your time to shine if you love education, right? But your primary benefit where we're partnering with professionals is going to be sort of sharing, not literally, but sharing access to our lists or to our communities with each other, okay? So let's talk about our use case and our resource that we've created for you. Today, we're going to talk about working with Realtors specifically. But as I've shared here multiple times already, the way that we can go about this is not just limited to partnering with Realtors. There's lots of ways we can do this. Alright, so first, let's think about Realtors. We're, we're going to switch gears and just talk about them right now. Realtors who sell houses typically, right? They put a lot of work into relationship building and they rely on a strong network to find and close new sales. And that means that they've got to take really good care of the people that they've worked with after the deal is done, right? It's not just, you know, hey, I sold you a house. I made, you know, a few handful of grand or whatever on my commission. Done, see you later, right? That's not how your Realtor works, right? How many of you have bought a house and you still are in touch with your Realtor? They'll mail you stuff. You know, they'll, they'll go out of their way to see how you're doing, say hello, right? There are a lot of businesses like this that work this way, right? If you love your Realtor, right? If, if you have really, like, they've done their job of really connecting with you and you are so happy with how they helped you, you are going to be referring your next person that you meet that's going to buy a house to your Realtor, right? Right? If you worked with somebody who helped you get something and you come across somebody who's like, oh hey, I'm looking to get this thing done, you are just without prompting. Your Realtor never asked you to tell your friends about them. You'll tell your friends about your Realtor, right? Because they've put the work into the relationship. And a lot of what this means is actually giving gifts, right? So one way that Realtors can increase that likelihood of referrals is gifting clients after they've made a sale. Care packages, closing day gift boxes, housewarming gifts, things like that, right? Because you've got a unique opportunity to step in here, right? If we're really thinking about our people, if we're thinking about the people that we want to serve and we know that they're out there in our community, we just don't know them yet. The first thing you should be asking yourself is, well, who does? Well, the person that sold them their house does. And that's a person who is always looking to make a new connection that could connect them to future clientele, right? So, because this is a, a thing that's growing in popularity, this is a phenomenon. And there are folks in Young Living that are doing this right now and I'm about to share with you. It is a popular thing to create sort of a closing day or a welcome home gift for your people. And because Realtors want to be connected to other professionals like you, they are typically going to be more than open to including your product, right? Your product into what they are giving to their clients, right? You want to be connected with your local business community. You want to be referred to their clientele and of course, you should want to be doing the same for them. That's what we do when we're a part of a networking group, right? So sharing a gift, a Realtor sharing a gift with their client who's purchased a house that includes products from local businesses is a no-brainer because they're giving goodwill to the local businesses. Local businesses will refer people who need a Realtor to that person, right? And we've got this nice little reciprocal circle. You've got a happy client, there'll be a referral. Happy client is getting exposed to local business products, right? And so this is, this is a lovely little collaborative thing that can be done, that is being done, that you should be taking part in or even spearheading among businesses in your community, right? Because when you've got goodwill with local businesses, you've got 10 times the power of an individual to have referrals coming your way, right? Whether that's a Realtor, whether that's a spa or whatever that place might be, right? If you've got goodwill, then you've got great referrals, right? So why not have them work with you? You've got products, right? You've got great products. You've got life-changing products and you get paid when you refer new customers to these products, right? So let's talk about how this could work for you, okay? First, you connect with Realtors to contribute to their closing day gift baskets for new home buyer clients. And you can do this with more than one real estate agent. Absolutely, absolutely. Connect with Realtors, ask if they are, you know, if, if they do closing day gifts for new home buyers that you would love to contribute, you know, some green cleaning or something like that, right? And then what you do is you get yourself some spray bottles and you take your bottle of Thieves Household Cleaner Concentrate diluted into those spray bottles, put a pretty little label on it that's got a QR code that they can scan to learn more about that product. I'll show you what this looks like here in just a second, right? So we are giving away to these Realtors bottles of Thieves Cleaner that we've made, right? Because they're diluted. We're not giving away like the big concentrate. We're giving away a diluted bottle, a sample, right? And that sample bottle has information on it where they can come and learn more about what that product is, different ways they can use it, get recipes, and then to purchase that product, other products in the line and other products that you recommend because you're going to be emailing them all this stuff because these are going to be your leads. And of course, their client is going to, they're going to scan the label often and then get educated by you and purchase from you. And you can, of course, repeat this for all kinds of other professionals in your area. So this is what it looks like. You got a closing day gift basket. You contribute a Thieves Household Cleaner sample to it where you've got your own QR code, some information here, really simple thing to do and make actually. And then what they do is when they scan this QR code, they're going to go over to this lovely page, which I've created and you are going to get this in a resource bundle today. They land on this page. They are then going to be tagged in your system and then start to receive a nine-message email campaign that's going to teach them about toxins in the home. It's going to share Young Living's own green cleaning guide that you can get from their website. But we're just going to include it here. We're going to have links that are going straight to your Young Living account for them to purchase. We're recommending all different kinds of oils in this series and just dripping education and encouraging people to come and interact with you. Do we see how this makes sense? They're going to go from gift basket to, oh, this smells really good. How do I use it? Oh, I can scan this. That's neat. Oh, okay. So all I have to do is go and put my name and email in here and then I'm going to get all this info, right? And guys, this is already pre-made. There's only a couple of things you have to do to make this your own. So we did create a resource bundle for you and again, very minimal editing, but you can make some more changes if you'd like to. So you can use this to execute this strategy with Get Oiling. You can replicate this and change the stuff that's in the replicated email and do this with seedlings. If there's a midwife who gives a baby basket to her clients, right? That kind of thing. These are the, the resources that are going to be included in this bundle you're getting. First one being this, this page that we're using as a landing page and it has that section at the top that you saw. It also has a separate section at the bottom where you get to share your image and your story because of course, these people don't know you from Adam. And, and then of course, we've got this confirmation page and then the campaign that sends out after, okay? So this is the top of the landing page. Let's keep your new home clean and green. Congrats on your new home. You've been gifted a sample bottle of Thieves Household Cleaner. I'd like to share tips with you on how to get the most out of it so your home stays clean and green. Put your info on this page. I'll send you a week's worth of tips and green inspiration along with my room-by-room safe cleaning guide. Guys, the, the email campaign's already written. You have to change zero things in it, right? So they, they fill out their information here. If they wanted to scroll down, they can learn more about you. This is what you're going to want to edit, where you can share some of your own story, but you have some inspiration here that you can see. The reason why we're not doing this on a landing page, in spite of this actually looking like our landing pages kind of do, is because we want the story for you to, that you share here on this page to be something that really relates to the person who just got a sample bottle from their Realtor and you're a stranger, right? So we don't want to go like too far down a rabbit hole. We really just kind of want to talk about the product that we're introducing them to, right? So that's at the bottom. And then this is their confirmation page. We tell them, hey, you know, make sure to go check your, check your email. I got stuff heading your way. And then finally, there's an email campaign. One quick thing that you should know, if you're using this, is your email signature, which we can go look at here in just a bit, after we're done with the slides here. Do you make sure that you have an email signature set up on your account? If for whatever reason, you don't have a custom email signature set up, you are going to want to go and insert your signature into each of the emails in this campaign. The easiest path forward, of course, is just to create your email signature, which we'll talk about here in just a bit, if you guys aren't familiar with how to do that. Anyway, so let's talk about this campaign real quick. It shares the Young Living Home Cleaning Guide. So this is like the freebie, this clean room-by-room guide. We share tips, facts, links. We're not just talking about Thieves Household Cleaner links. At one point, we're talking about carpet cleaning and, you know, I recommend, you know, here, use this recipe. I really love using lemon for this. And so it links off to lemon. But it's with your member number attached to it. You don't have to do anything to it. It does offer again, those links to purchase products and it encourages them to respond to you. We want them to reach out and start talking to you, right? So we'll talk about the strategy for this bundle here. First, this is designed to connect new home buyers, buyer Realtors you'll partner with to Thieves Household Cleaner and to buying Thieves Household Cleaner from you, right? You're going to provide diluted sample spray bottles of Thieves Household Cleaner to those Realtors to add to their gift baskets. Your spray bottles are going to have labels attached to them that'll have a QR code that their client can scan to learn more about what's in the bottle and how to use it. That QR code on the label is going to send them to that page that I just showed you that's in the bundle, right? That captures the lead, tags them, and then starts to drip this email campaign to them for a total of nine days. And then, of course, the emails in that campaign are going to share the home cleaning guide as well as all those links to purchase, daily tips and encouragement and encouraging them to reach out and reply to you, okay? So let's talk about how to get this set up so you can start using it. First, you want to edit the page. It's, we, part of the title of it is landing page. It's going to be under pages in your account. You're going to swap the image here, of course, for a photo of you. And then you want to swap this out for your own story or use this story really as a framework for how you talk about it here. If you've got a new home buyer story, then by all means, add that in here, change out the personal information to let them know a little bit about you. But remember that the main point of what's here is to get them to put their information in the field because that's now a lead for you, right? Alright, next thing we're going to do is get, is create a QR code. I promise, this is crazy simple. You can do this for free at QR-code-generator.com. And literally, all you're going to do, once you have that page edited and you're ready to share it, you're going to get the link to it and you're going to put it right here on the screen in QR Code Generator, right? You don't have to do any of this funny stuff with the frames, but you could. And then you download the image file. And now you're just going to get that weird little square thing that you scan if you want a QR code, okay? So we can generate a simple QR code. And then you're going to add that code and label to your bottle. So you're going to go to Canva or if you're using Avery Labels, for instance, they have label maker software, whatever it is, whatever you prefer, there is not a really, you know, specific formula to this. Just make sure that you've got a label on your bottle that's, that's legible, that's big enough for them to read and that it says, scan me for info. Drop that image in there onto the label and then, of course, you're going to have those labels printed and you're going to add those to your bottles, right? So take that QR code and add it to your label that you design, have them printed, add those to the product sample bottles that you've created, right? Which everybody here knows how to dilute thieves, right? Just do like a pretty standard dilution. Don't do like the super heavy duty one. Just do like a standard dilution, right? Sarah says, I created a two-by-two square graphic in Canva and then imported it onto the label template. I love it. I love it. That's perfect, right? But just go with whatever you've got. If you're buying labels off of, you know, from a label maker, in a lot of cases, they'll have their own sort of software. I've made labels this way before, simply using Avery, which is like one of the biggest label makers in the world. And I do this for, I send out gifts at Christmas time and, and I will put QR codes onto the, the little gifts themselves. And so I, again, I just use the same thing, right? You take that label maker, or sorry, you take that QR code maker, have that go wherever you want it to go. And then you're going to put the label right there onto the product that's got the QR code on it. Sarah's got more. She says she used eight out samples, clear plastic bottles with trigger sprayers. So a half capsule of Thieves Household Cleaner in the bottle and then fill with water. Household cleaner in the bottle and then fill with water. Yes. All right. So now, once we've got this done, we're ready to hand these over to your Realtor partners to share, right? And then you can repeat this process for other professionals in your area with more Young Living products. So many things we can do with this. So, so very many things we can do with this. And thank you to Sarah for, uh, Sarah actually brought up, you know, hey, I want to do this. I want to follow this process. Could you show me how to do it? And so now we're here today. So thank you, Sarah, for bringing this up because now the whole community gets to learn. Thank you. So, uh, let's talk about some more ideas for partnering with professionals. First, uh, welcome home baby gifts from midwives, doulas, chiropractors, doctors offices, massage therapists. For new moms. So those welcome home baby gifts, let's talk about, I mean, what would this look like? Welcome home baby gifts. You could make, um, put some of the, the seedlings calm. Uh, into a, a small spray bottle with some witch hazel and you've got a pillow spray. Baby linen spray. Voila. Here you go, mom. Right? What are some other things that you might consider doing? Housewarming gifts from wedding planners for new couples. This is pretty cool, right? Think of different types of therapists who might work with clients. Um, maybe if you create like a little inhaler, uh, for AFT, maybe it's something that calms you down. A lavender inhaler, something like that. And you could give that, um, to people who work with stressed out people, right? And so here's a gift and now they are building goodwill with their customers by giving them something amazing. And then they get exposed to something that you can teach them about. They can become your lead and of course, become your customer. Self-care baskets for network connections who send referrals. So this is actually going to be, um. This is going to be an interesting strategic thing for you to do if you are connected, especially in those, uh, networking groups. So people who work on closings for people who buy houses, there's a number of different people who are a part of that process, right? Uh, so Realtors and mortgage loan originator, uh, originators, for instance. Have to have like a good connection with each other, right? And so they'll often, their offices will gift each other things at certain times of the year. We are starting to look ahead into the holiday season here. You might want to consider reaching out and asking professionals who do all kinds of things. Whether or not their business or their office is planning on sending out client gifts this holiday season. And if they would like to have some free product to add to it. And then you can start asking, well, who is your person? Who are you trying to help? Is there a theme for what you're doing? And then you can come up with some samples. You could literally put little address like Avery address labels with these QR codes on them. And stick them on, um, samples of Nixia, you guys. Or, or, or single use packets of thieves household cleaner. Yes, Bertha is going to a baby shower this Saturday. Make the spray. Yes, absolutely. Give mom a sample of thieves household cleaner in the single use packet, right? And then put on that QR code, you know, hey, come check this out and just use this thing that you see here. Um, that's already done, already made, right? And then, uh, also consider people who sell cars, especially in the nicer, like higher end car dealerships. Right? Where we're talking about, you know, the imported cars. Quite often, there's going to be some kind of gift from the dealership to the person. Who just spent that exorbitant amount of money on a car, right? So maybe there's a green new car care kit. Maybe you've got like a little, um, maybe you provide like a little diffuser. Um, like a car diffuser with a, you know, like with, uh, maybe a, a pre-filled. One or two little discs that go in it. Cause you put a couple of your own drops of an oil on, you put them in a little baggie. Uh, put a QR code on the baggie and you know, hey, get in touch with me if you want to keep your car smelling this way, right? So much we could do with this. All right. So let's talk about more about these products that we can share. Make sure that we are focusing on products that have, um, that are unique. To Young Living as often as possible, whether that be a unique blend. Of oils that Young Living has or a product that Young Living has that you can't find anywhere else, right? So things like room sprays, pillow sprays, uh, being cost effective, of course, is critical here. So being able to have the format of this be something that's easily, uh, shared and scalable. Um, your personal inhalers, if you guys have ever made those before, the little plastic guys, you know, like the little Vicks things that we used to, you know, smell and get at the. Just at the store, you can actually make those and put essential oils onto them. Right? They won't last for super long if you don't put a ton of oils on them, but don't we want them to come and find out how they can get more? Right? Uh, roller bottles, uh, this is going to be on the higher end of cost. Uh, but for particularly high value connects, this could actually be really great. And you can get many roller bottles. That is a thing. Bath salt mixes and bath bombs. Also a great way to give samples and a fun thing that you can do. Right? And any, any kind of low overhead, high value DIY that you love to make and share. Uh, shower melts, right? It's like bath bombs, but smaller. Great thing to give away perhaps, uh, to massage therapists. Or people who work with people who need stress based therapy. So now they can take this stress away centered little melty guy and put them in the corner of their shower. And now they've got this experience. And if your QR code is on the outside of the package, now they can learn more about how they can manage their stress. Think about all of the pre-existing pre-written resources that you have from your content providers. That you could be connecting these folks to just on the other side of a landing page. And they, the way they get to that landing page is just from the QR code on the label, right? Yes, purification oil spray for yoga mats. Yes, yes, yes. That is a low overhead option for you. 100%. I love it. All right. So let's get into life helping Q and A. If you guys want to see any of this done, this is an opportunity to do it. And of course. If you have a need for a specific helper support, we're also here for that now. So I'm going to go into the Q and A because that's. Where we are, uh, going to focus our efforts. If you ask questions in the chat, please make sure you bring them over to the Q and A if they have not been answered. All right. Do you have any recommendations on gifts for chiropractors to give to their clients? That generally speaking, Amanda, is really going to depend on the chiropractor. Because some chiropractors really love focusing on performance and people who are in sports. So in that case, uh, you know, maybe having a five mil, um, roller bottle of, um. You know, of, of like a pain relieving blend would be a fantastic thing to give them with your QR code on it to give to their clients. But they may focus like one of our, uh, community members, Jody, on moms with kids, right? Uh, and so in her case, having things that are more kid focused. So I would actually first, um, chat with the chiropractor. And see, or, or you know, at least just look at their website first and see if their, their chiropractic practice has a focus. But generally speaking, um, chiropractors after an adjustment. Um, you're wanting the body to remember what just happened to it. We want it to stay in that alignment for as long as possible. So any kind of oil that's calming and centering, maybe in an inhaler. Where the chiropractor can say, now take this and breathe this in for the next couple of hours. And then, you know, as you go throughout your week, if you ever feel stressed out, breathe this and that might support their alignment perhaps. That's, that's one thing to consider that could be applicable to all, uh, but I would really talk about the, yeah, talk about this with a chiropractor to learn about. What their goals, uh, are for their practice. Oh, valor, that's a good idea. Yeah. All right, Rebecca, can you go over how to set up my email campaign to show it's coming from me or my name? So where your email is going to be coming from, and actually let me go log into a, um. An account so I can show this to you. Cause I'm not in one that I want to. There we go. All right. Let me go and show this to you. If you are sending out emails, there is one place where you can go. To see where, uh, the, the information they're getting and that's right here. Click your name. And this is going to be the info that's sent. Right? So this is all the contact information that would show up on your website. Is the stuff that shows up right here when you click your name. Now, if you're wanting to change the, you know, sent on behalf of, and the, you know, sort of the, the information at the bottom of the email where you're sending campaigns and the like. That's in advanced settings under general. And by the way, this is also where you put your, um. Where you put your, your signature in. If you want a signature on all of those emails in the campaign, go to contact settings, general settings. Set up your signature right here. But then all the way down here to the bottom. This is where you can. Uh, put your, your own message, right? So for, for Janes, it says, you know, sent on behalf of, uh, Jane. Such and such address, which is the stuff that's right here. Uh, uh, via get oiling. If you want to change that message, you can actually change that custom email footer right here on the same page. Just under advanced settings where your email signature is. Indira, would I pre-make the spray bottles or do I ask the Realtor when he or she will have a closing? That's a good question. I think that it really depends. Um, if you are. In this particular case, the funnel that we've created is for someone who has just bought a house, right? So, um. The question would really more be for the Realtor. What does your production schedule look like, right? So do they make their basket? When there's a closing coming up, do they keep one handy? Maybe just already wrapped up in cellophane? Like it's going to kind of depend on how they go about it. So I would maybe ask them. Because they probably already have, if they're doing this already, they already have a system around how they do it. Um, and then, um, then you would just work out a way to be in touch, uh, to make sure that, um, that you've got that to them. But just making sure that it's in their hands so that they could just put it in. You could just give them four or five and be like, you know, hey, here you go. Make sure you get these to folks who are, you know, who have a closing. Um, one of the things that you might consider doing as well is maybe even going straight to brokers. Right? Like you can make those connections with the Realtors, but brokers are, um, you know, the ones who run the offices that Realtors work out of. And they may actually even cover some of the cost and the coordination of getting these things made to go out. Because you know, a closing was made in their office, um, and the Realtor themselves may or may not, again, just really going to depend on the, the brokerage. Um, the, the Realtor may or may not be the one that's handling this particular thing. When offering gifts, uh, for example, my massage therapist clients, would you mention the Young Living business to them? For them to sponsor their clients? I would not open with that Rebecca. I would, um, really position this first as, you know, hey, I've got, um. You know, I've, I've got this product that I love to give away as a sample that could really be beneficial, uh, for your clients and build some goodwill with them. You know, is that something that you'd be open to? And then as you're having that conversation with them, you know. Let them kind of, I mean, if you're, if you're giving and pouring in first, people are naturally, you know, so as to not feel like jerks. Going to want to reciprocate in kind, right? So at some point they're going to say, you know, well, how can I help you? Right? And at that point, you know, you're basically saying like, you know, hey, as, as, as many of your customers, uh, can use and benefit from this, the better. Um, you know, and if they want to know more, well, what is it? Like, how does it work? Whatever? Um, you know, you get into that conversation and then you could mention at that point, you know, once they're asking you business questions, you know? Um, you could mention, hey, by the way, you know, these could be, you know, these could be your sales. This could be another income generator for your business and I could work with you, uh, to, you know, make sure you know how to do all this stuff. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't lead with it. Let them, let them ask and show that that's a thing that they're interested in. Basic question, custom email signature. Do I choose cut, uh, from fonts? Making sure this is the way to do it. So. Let me show you real quick. Um, where you might use, um. Where you're doing anything in email. Generally speaking, where you're doing anything in email, you want your formatting to be as basic as possible. Because there are spam filters with internet service providers. You know, the, the folks who like, you know, decide whether or not you go to the junk mail. Um, if you got a bunch of weird text and strangely out of the ordinary formatted stuff. It's going to potentially bring up a red flag for deliverability. So generally speaking, if you want to have a cute image, that's where you put your scripty font. So do this in Canva, export it as a, um. Uh, what is, uh, what am I thinking here? Transparent background. Export as a transparent background, uh, give it a, um, alternative text. So in this case, this is not done. This is actually, if you don't have alternative text on your images, uh, in your emails, this is something that does kind of count against you in terms of an authority score. Uh, so put any cutesy fonts and stuff that you want on your image. And then everything else should just be really straightforward. Just grab your fonts, uh, from your system that are built in. If you have cute ones like, you know, this funny one here, right? Speech society. Um, you could use it, but again, it's, it's a generally, I would advise, uh, to use the most simple, basic fonts possible. For your email and to have your main sort of body font for your website and everything that you're using, uh, be that. Okay. What else you guys? Do we have more questions? Does anybody want to come out and maybe chat about something? That you maybe have in mind. You want to try to approach someone in your area, a professional. You want to talk about some ideas. I see there's a lot going on here in the chat. Um, and I kind of want to share also, um, Sarah has shared some things here. Okay, here we go. Let's talk about some ideas that are in here. Cause there's going to be folks that watch this later on YouTube. They're going to want to know what all of this was going on here. You guys got to join this live call. All right. So. Uh, Cool Azul cream for arthritis, FDA approved to offer to chiropractors. That is, I, I don't know that I would put that into a sample though. That's going to be a really tricky, messy, potentially expensive thing for you. Um, you know, potentially something in a roller bottle would be great. Um, valor is an interesting thought there. Um, for people who do reflexology, lavender piece and calming, yes. Um, Allison says, my Cairo is my first ever enrollment, but I can't seem to get him on board with more. He buys on and off. I cringe to stay silent when I go into the bathroom and see all the toxic products, but his diffuser is always going. You got to start. So maybe you give him a sample of thieves. Or you ask him, you know, hey, or, or do you have a cleaning company that you use? Right? Cause maybe they're stocking his stuff. Right? Offer to, uh, do sort of a walkthrough assessment with him. All right. Sarah says, I've heard of people making up a lot of them and giving them to the Realtor ahead of time. Because it would be a real hassle to have to make up the bottles for one, one at a time. Yeah. What I would do honestly is I would get a bunch of the spray bottles, uh, and I would put, uh, you know, and I'd get the, you know, the, the big thieves household cleaner and just make them. Right? And just have them ready, have all those labels bulk produced. You're ready to go. And then you give away, you know, find out how many closings they typically have in a month. Those are numbers that they usually know pretty well. So you just make sure that they're set up for the next couple of months and then just make sure you've got them in your contact manager, uh, with reminders for yourself to follow up. Uh, see how things are going and, uh, and ask them if they need more. Carol says, I'm not technically savvy to use QR codes and make a website, but I do have decades of experience with Young Living. Anyone in Salt Lake area in Utah wants to partner with me. So Carol, uh, we do have Facebook group. If you would like to, uh, take that conversation over to our Facebook group, uh, you could probably find some really, uh, really great people local to you. Um, and you could also partner long distance as well, uh, as many of us do. All right. What else? What else? Do you have a link for good eight ounce spray bottles? So specialty bottle is my personal favorite, um, because they actually have bulk pricing. Um, I like to get metal bottles from them, metal aluminum spray bottles. And you could get the trigger ones. Um, I've made samples for like facial sprays. Uh, that I send out, you know, using hydro salves and things like that. And you can get a whole lot of them at once. And you can even get like really small ones. Let's see, talk about how we can dilute the hand soap and thieves household cleaner. If the cost is prohibitive. Oh, I love that. Yes. And chiropractors can often, yes. You're a thing that you guys should know about holistic practitioners. If you are going to be approaching folks who are chiropractors, acupuncturists, massage therapists, et cetera. In your community. Understand that. Well over half of all people who have been through certification and licensing and are able to practice. Have what is essentially a part-time business. So you know, these like do, do be thinking about that as you're, you know, even if you're, you're just kind of chatting with them about. Using something in their practice. Um, it may be in a lot of cases that they are looking for a more frugal method to lower, that lower their overhead. And when they, and if they, uh, are, you know, sort of comfortable enough to broach the subject with you. Uh, then of course, by all means, talk about how they can add an additional income stream. Chiropractors just do great in network marketing. I don't know what the, the science is there. Every network marketing company I've ever worked with has had a chiropractor somewhere near the very top of the comp plan. It's a thing. So. You should want to recruit chiropractors because I think just empirically in this industry, it's just, it's a good thing. Awesome. You guys, so much great input in the chat here. I hope that you will be taking this conversation over to our Facebook group. And sharing more of how these things are working for you and different types of practitioners or, or businesses in your local area. Um, there's so much information that we can be sharing because I mean, at the end of the day, we are doing this in our own local area, right? Like this, there's no competition here at all. Um, and we've got a novel and interesting way to go in and serve first, right? Just please do make sure that whatever the choices that you're making. Just please do make sure that whatever the choices that you're making, that it's a smart one economically. Because, you know, if you're dipping into your product, you do wanna make sure that if you're giving it away, that you've got a really high chance of getting a lead out of it, because that's really your goal, right? Is for somebody to have a product experience and to wanna have a conversation with you, right? They're gonna love something so much that they're gonna get in touch with you. I know this is on a, kind of on the higher side of price, uh, but think of some of the more effective things that you've used. I have never seen a person put digi's on their belly and not see relief, uh, like almost instantaneously. Think about all of the different types of businesses that you could go to with like a tiny roller bottle that they can, you know, give them for their tummy troubles, right? Like just here, hand this out to your people. Maybe there's, um, there are folks who are working as health coaches or they're functional practitioners, working with people who are dealing with digestive issues, right? So many things, people with food allergies, my word, there's so much. Um, so we have a new path forward, you guys. Education really needs to be something that takes place with people who are qualified and qualified means they've had a product experience. And then they said, oh, where do I get more of this? How do I know more about this? And now when they get educated, they're receptive and they're ready to move forward. Awesome. We got a few more questions here. Young Living did have a sample size of pain cream and others worth checking. Yeah, so definitely look and see what all of the samples that are available right now. And that should be a part, you guys, if you're actively growing your business in your local area, the sample sized products that Young Living has should be a part of your order at least every other month. Right? That way you really can be, you know, stick these, uh, you know, stick the labels with QR codes on them and have the QR code set up just the way that we talked about today, except going to educate on that product and what it can do for them. Mindwise bottle, just buy spray tops. Oh, that's a cool idea. Alright, Cheryl says, if I'm at work at the spa and using oils on clients and have the diffuser on, I think I'll make a flyer with a QR code to send them to my link tree. Then talk about the kit and my fall collection wishlist for two main products to help people get started. That is brilliant. Oh, my word. What if, oh, Cheryl, what a great idea. What if you provided a business? If they agreed to it, I'm gonna have a QR code on the wall next to your diffuser. I'm gonna bring my own diffuser and oils in here. And if you will run this diffuser every day and I'll show you how to keep it clean and run it, I'm gonna put this sign up right here. So you can keep your stuff smelling good and people can learn about the blend, right? You're adding something of value into your, um, into your practice, into the lives of the people who interact in it. And I've got a chance for people to learn about me and what I've got. Ah, that's so cool. Cheryl, that's brilliant. Thank you for sharing that. And the bundle you're giving us is explain how to create the QR code to link to those resources. Yes. So, um, let me show you what the bundle page looks like. If I could find it here in the chat, hold on. Let me find it here real quick. Um, on the resource bundle page, let me go share and show you guys. I actually walked through this. Right? So the strategy. Um, well, we lay that out here. So I mean, I'm not necessarily demoing how to make a QR code, because that is something that you can do on that website that I shared with you today. Tell you what, I'm gonna make sure that the slides from today are in the description on YouTube. So you can actually just pull these out as a PDF, walk through, click on that QR code link, and then you can follow what the images show you on the slide, uh, so that you've got more of that step by step. Um, what do you have connected with the QR code next to the diffuser? That would be a landing page, Allison, just like we're doing with this bundle that I shared with you today. They scan the QR code, they go to a page that says, hey, do you love that smell? Learn more about this here, right? Put your information in here and I'm gonna tell you why you should be ditching candles and switching to using diffusers or something, right? Alright, tips for having the labels be waterproof. Um, Rebecca, there are waterproof labels you can buy or water resistant labels that you can buy. So, uh, definitely just add that into sort of your searching, uh, criteria when you're looking for labels for your bottles. Uh, awesome. Yeah, Cheryl, that's such a great idea. Um, specialtybottle.com is the one that I mentioned earlier today. And they have glass, they have, um, they have plastic, of course. Um, and they have all different sizes and they have aluminum ones, which is I, what I really like to use, uh, for soaring, uh, oils and for sprays that have oils in them. And that's where you can buy them in bulk. And they get really cheap if like you really wanna invest in this and buy in bulk, or if you wanna go in together and buy a bunch together, um, and they ship really fast. Yep, specialtybottle.com. I actually got, um, I got glass jars from here ages ago. I did one of those really cute. Have you guys seen this like on Pinterest? Um, I did one of those really cute spice jars where they're all hexagonal and so like they have, um, uh, magnets in the lids and they stick onto metal or onto the fridge. And so it's like, it's really pretty, all these different colors. I got them from there. And, uh, they were really cheap because, well, it's a bulk bottle place. So, um, that's, that's my personal recommendation. Um, Amazon has some great off-brand labels that are waterproof. Yeah, that's, I, I've always gotten labels for stuff that I make on Amazon. I love it, you guys. And, and again, be thinking about this with the holidays coming up. If you wanna have something that's not necessarily, hey, new home buyer, green your house, right? Um, you know, this could be for anybody. Um, you could have something like this if you wanted to, if you're a DIYer, which I one hundred percent am. And I only make stuff once a year and that's for my skincare, my kids. And for, uh, my family and closest friends, I send out, uh, you know, sort of little packages. And, um, you should be doing, if you're a DIYer, a little something like that, but just make sure that you've got a QR code that they can scan so that they can go learn about those things, right? Create inhalers and one's got stress away in it and the other's got valor in it or something like that. And then, you know, tell them, hey, when you're riding down the road in your car and you hit traffic and things are stressed out, pull out this diffuse, this, uh, this, uh, inhaler and inhale it, right? Love it. Welcome basket for new neighbors. That's fantastic. Great ideas, you guys. Well, let's keep this going in our, uh, Facebook group. I can't wait to see what you guys do with this. So excited that you guys are excited about this. Be sure to share this with a friend who might benefit from this. Uh, and of course, uh, if you're watching this on YouTube, the resource bundle will be in the description. Uh, so you can actually get this to plug into your own Get Oiling account. And, um, and of course you can follow the instructions that we've gone over here today. Uh, Rebecca, is it always connected to a landing page and then set up a campaign when an email is submitted? Yes, that's right. So what we're doing is what, what I've shared with you today is a funnel, right? And it's a funnel that is designed to capture an interested person's information and that interested person in this case has a bottle of thieves household cleaner in their hand and they may have used it already. They've smelled it, they're curious about it. And it was given to them by someone that they trust, right? So they scan this QR code and they go to, uh, directly to a page that says, hey, you've just been gifted this thing. They're like, yes, I have, here it is. Well, if you'd like to know more about what's in it and get my tips on how to use it, put your information in here. And they're like, okay, maybe. Then they look at the bottom of the page and you're like, hey, I'm a real person. I live in your area. I blah, blah, blah. Here are these things. Here's a story. Um, if you wanna learn more about this stuff, go ahead and put your information in up there. Promise I won't spam you. Literally, I'm your neighbor. Look forward to chatting with you soon. And then there's a campaign. After they say yes, they opt in, they start getting that campaign. And that campaign is, you know, here is this great thirty-something page resource, which Young Living already made, so you don't have to do anything with it. Here's, uh, here's this great resource that's gonna show you, you know, it's gonna talk about the dangerous, uh, you know, chemicals and the stuff that's under your sink. You should be looking at those things. Uh, here is this, here's that, right? So in any instance where we're talking about, you know, creating a pillow spray and giving this to doulas or whatever the, the circumstance is that you wanna create, they need to land on a page. That's where the QR code goes. And that page needs to have a form on it. Where they put in their name and their email and potentially ideally their phone number. And then in the settings on that page, they're gonna get tagged for whatever their interest is, right? And, and whoever you might've shared that resource with, so this could be a chiropractor lead, right? As a tag. Realtor lead as a tag, but then also whatever it is that you're doing. So thieves sample, um, green cleaning, whatever that might be. And yeah, so that's, you're, you're gonna basically replicate the same structure that you see with this funnel, uh, for any of those that you want to create. Awesome. Let me see, what if we were to give a thief spray to a new neighbor, but haven't done anything with that yet? Um, I mean, it's cool to just give stuff to people, but make sure that when you're giving stuff to people that you say, you know, hey, I wanna make sure that you know how to use this. Let's set up a time. Bam bam, book a meeting from a meeting. Don't leave until you know the next time you're getting together, because if you don't, then you're gonna be chasing them to get back together. And they're gonna have forgotten about it and they're gonna start thinking it's weird that you're trying to chase them down to talk about a bottle you gave them that they don't remember, right? So set an appointment when you're handing it over. Um, the bundle is available right now, literally right now, that you can, you can grab immediately. Um, let's, uh, I'll pop this in here in the chat, grab it right now. Bundle is available right now. Um, let's see, Sarah says you could even gift thieves cleaner samples to your current neighbors. Way to get to know your neighbors, yes. Different funnels for different types of leads. Yes, Rebecca. So, um, if you are going to work with a doula, for instance, and you're going to be giving a doula a, you know, calm baby pillow spray, then you're going to follow the same steps that we've done here today, except, um, on your, so just replicate the resources, claim the bundle a second time, right? And this time you're going to name them, um, you know, new mom baby spray or something like that, so that you know what they are. And then you're just gonna swap out, yes, in a different QR code. That's correct. That's exactly right. Replicating the whole system in a new setting uh, for a new product, uh, a new lead, right? A different person in this case. Uh, so yeah, each, each one of the components of this would be created anew, including the bottle, the label, the page, the campaign, the tags and everything associated with it. Um, so the landing pages, how many you have, Rebecca, are gonna depend on the plan that you have. And, and just to reiterate, this, uh, bundle, it's not a landing page like our landing pages are set up in our system, because we do have landing pages that are like simplified versions of, uh, of sort of lead forms that you can use in different interesting ways on our site. Um, this is a page, like a website page that's in this bundle. Now, if you wanna replicate what it does on a landing page, if you, you know, have used, if you're on basic and you've used up your allotted ten, uh, regular website pages, then you could certainly uh, just do what I've done here and just put it onto a landing page. You're just gonna be missing that opportunity to really give specific context to what you're sharing, because your general Young Living story is not necessarily going to help that page convert to a new lead. Um, like it would if you were really giving a contextual, hey, when I bought my first home, hey, when I brought my first kid home after, you know, giving birth, right? Um, so pages are going to be, uh, really, um, the magic here for this. And you do have, based on your plan, a certain number for your plan levels. Bertha makes QR codes for each of her wish lists on her Young Living account. Even if you're promoting one product, they can see other related products. That's cool. Um, Rebecca, the page limit is going to depend on your plan level. At basic, you are limited to ten. And that's total, uh, in your vaults and on your, your website, uh, front-facing pages. Awesome. Well, we look forward to that. Yes, the, the Black Friday is a special where we do tend to have, uh, some, some pretty awesome deals you can take advantage of with upgrades and things like that. So that is right around the corner. Um, and you know, be on, be on the lookout for that. Awesome. Great questions today, you guys. I'm so excited to see what you do with this. We're gonna go ahead and get on our way and get these things done. Um, share in our Facebook group. Let us know, uh, who you're working with, what you're sharing and, uh, and, and how you're going to be using this in, uh, some unique and interesting way in your local community. Till then, we'll see you guys next week.